To order, have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilman Airwood.
If you bow your heads, please. Our heavenly Father, we just come to you tonight and give you all the praise and glory for, for being here tonight and being able to make the decisions that need to be made for the county and for the citizens of Newberry County and help us to make the right decisions, Lord. We pray this in the holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. Item number one on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion of counsel?
Motion.
Motion to accept the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. It carries unanimously. Item number two are first additions or deletions to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to propose under our future meetings that we move our second council meeting in December from December the fifteenth to December the eighth. That would be a week from today. Due to the ability to have a quorum, we would, we already had some members that were not going to be here and it also gives us an opportunity to move forward on CPST and some other things a little quicker. So I would propose that we move that meeting forward a week.
You want to do that as an addition to when we get to it, or?
Well, I was just, right now, that was going to be the addition that we could vote on to change.
Okay, alright, I got you. Alright, so we have a motion that we add in addition to an item already on the agenda of future meetings to change that meeting. Is there a second that we have that discussion?
A second.
A second? Is there any discussion on that? So we will add under future meetings a discussion of moving the meeting to the next meeting from the fifteenth to the eighth. All in favor of that by show of hands. Opposed likewise. Now would there be a motion to the amended agenda to accept bid?
Motion.
Motion and a second to accept the amended agenda. Motion by Mr. Hilt, second by Mrs. Airwood. Is there a discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor by show of hands. And those opposed likewise. It carries unanimously. Item number three is consideration to accept the bid for emergency lighting. Crystal Walter, Purchasing Director, and Tommy Long, Emergency Services Coordinator.
Tommy received funding from the state to purchase the message center lighting. It's fifty thousand dollars being provided by the state and the remaining amount for four thousand roughly would be coming out of his capital.
That's right.
Capital budget. And this is what it looks like.
Y'all can say these all the time, but I was able to get three of these devices. So we'll be able to use them where we need them and within the county to help control traffic or get messages out to the public. And they can be programmed through the internet. So if you need to change them, not even going out on the site, you can.
Wow.
It's got radar detection on it as well.
Wow.
Okay.
I can't, those things are huge and so I certainly appreciate you getting the state funds to help with that as well. Are there any questions for Mr. Long or Ms. Walter?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the bid.
Motion?
Second.
Second? Or is there a discussion? Thank you again for doing that time. All in favor by show of hands?
Thank you.
All opposed likewise. Seeing none, it is unanimously approved. Next is a resolution to amend the guidelines for property rentals. Would there be a motion as to the resolution?
Yeah, I had asked that we delay this so that we could get some additional information. I see Irvin's here tonight.
Come on down, Mr. West.
Alrighty. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are y'all doing?
Alright, sir.
Good. Irvin, I had, when I saw that, I noticed that we were raising our rental rates and I don't have a problem with raising our rates for individuals and, you know, groups, you know, family reunions, weddings or anything like that. But I did want to ask you a little bit about preparation and cleanup, both for Community Hall and Helena Center since those are the two that were listed.
Right.
So I just wanted you to kind of talk me through what it takes to prepare it, how much time, what it takes to clean it up, how much time, any problems and to kind of help us in making our decisions.
Alright, let's start with the Community Hall. I think everybody knows that Community Hall's an old building. We have done a renovation some twelve years back or something like that and put it in the state that it's in now, which has refurbished it to a certain point. But the thing of it is, it still has a lot of old parts in it. There's still, all the, most, all of the wiring in it is very old, okay? The plumbing, for the most part, other than where we added the bathroom, is old. A lot of, about fifty percent of the problems we have when we do rent it and everything is kind of related to that old stuff and everything. Some of the problems we'll get is the lights went out, okay? The breakers, you know, tripped, but they were overloaded and that sort of stuff. The wiring, like I said, it's old wiring and it's all in the walls. It's not an easy job to go in there and get to it. It's all in plaster walls, up in the ceiling, in between floors and all of that. So you, you just have to work with it when you, you get that particular problem and try to chase it down and fix it. So now, and so that's one of the things to remember about the Community Hall start with. It's old and everything, most everything in it is used. And so, like anything, the more you use it, the more it's going to wear and the more problems you're going to have. We have done a lot of renovation. We have fixed a lot of things and like I said, it's a beautiful building and everything and serves a good purpose. It depends on who's renting it. The Rotary, you know, they're one of our primary, what I call the civic people or groups that use it. We set them up when they have their meetings and, you know, basically we come in, set up the twelve round tables with five to seven chairs around each one and then we clean everything again. We've already cleaned after the last use, but we clean everything again, which is the bathrooms, the floors, the kitchen area, outside. So you've probably got, and mainly it's the custodial staff doing that part of it, and you've probably got anywhere from two to four to five hours' worth of those guys setting it up. Special events, especially this time of year now, when you get into the Christmas events and the festival events, there's a lot, a lot of times there's a lot more setup on there. In the years past, we've been setting it up for Christmas and in fact, I think we still got our tree. We still have a special tree that we got, but we hadn't set it up now in what, two years? But we usually set that up every time for Christmas and that takes a couple of days. And we get help from, you know, some of the community members and all of that. We assist them and it's a kind of a joint effort. We put it together. So, you know, each time you rent it, depending on the request of whoever's renting it and everything, there's, there's a couple, three, four hours' worth of setup, okay? Then it depends on what your next event is going to be. You can sometimes leave it as it is, depending on the schedule, and then sometimes you have to knock all that back down. You take in all of those big tables and folding them up, putting them in the racks that we got, the carts, when we put them back there in the back, in the back room, and the chairs we fold them to. And that kind of opens up the whole floor area, if that's what the next group wants to use it for, is an open floor area. Or, or you could have a group that just wants all chairs and that sort of stuff. So there is some of the setup time on that. The cleanup afterwards, that, once again, that depends on who, what group is using it. Sometimes the place is pretty well cleaned. They've, they've bagged up their trash like they're supposed to and emptied their trashcans like they have and that's, that makes it pretty easy. Once again, we're coming in there and hauling the trash away, cleaning the toilets and the sinks again and mopping down the floors and just a general cleanup. And that's a couple of hours again. Same thing, couple, three, couple, three to four hours, that sort of stuff. Sometimes though, the place is a mess, okay? And then, you know, we're, got a little more time to spend on cleaning up and all like that. So it depends, like I said, on who's using it and that sort of thing. The other thing is, it's always, I always got to have one of the guys, one of the maintenance staff on call for, we have somebody on call every week, weekend. But usually when we're renting the facilities, that guy's going to get a call out for one or two or both of the facilities. Toilet stopped up, won't flush, so forth. Lights aren't working. Something's, power's not on on this recettable or that recettable. Air conditioner's not working, froze up, that sort of thing. And so they have to be, they're called out to go take care of those problems and that can happen, it does happen Friday evening, Saturdays all the time, Saturday, Saturday night and even into Sunday when we're renting on Sunday. And then, and then usually, once we find out what that particular problem is, we're back in there the first part of the next week trying to fix it, rectify whatever it was. If it's a bad breaker or wire has shorted out in a particular spot, we'll try to go try to pull that piece of it and get it splashed back in. So there's, there's the maintenance part of it too.
Alright.
And then, and then, sir.
Sorry. I thought you were through. I'm sorry.
I'll try to be sure. And then you just get into the wear and tear of the whole thing. You know, it's a cumulative thing of being, you know, if you keep using. I know we got the deposit, but if somebody messes up one wall here or something like that, you know, that deposit amount isn't necessarily going to pay for that cost as it, as it adds on and everything. You get into the, into the point where, okay, the building, the area is really showing the effects, okay? And then we get back, we come back in there and do, like at a Community Hall, we do the floors ourselves with staff. We, we strip them down and re-wax them, depending on the use, but it had been in the years past, every year we'd been doing that. Because even though it is a pretty nice hardwood floor, if you don't take care of it, and especially with some of the hard use we get, it gets, starts getting scratched up and grooved and all like that. So we'd get in there, strip it down and, and now we, we, we've done the light sanding. I have had it contracted out before where we had some real grooves and gouges in the floor. And I've got, you know, like Whittaker or somebody to come in there and really do the hard sanding and then do the refinish. But we do it like an annual thing. And then we'll do an annual thing on the, on the, on the touch-up painting in the Community Hall. But then, once again, because a lot of, some of the old stuff, some stuff breaks. We just spent, I'm thinking seven thousand dollars on the last line break. It was a, well, we had two of them. One was a hot water heater and one was an air conditioner. So, and it caused damage. In fact, it caused damage down below in the chambers, a big room. So we had, we had, well, we had a mechanical repair we had to do. I forget exactly what the cost was on that. Crystal might, might know that. Fixed that problem, the piping and everything. I think on the last one, if I remember, it was the hot water heater, so we replaced the hot water heater, which is way up high in the attic area to get up there. And, but what happened on that one is it created so much damage down below. We actually, it actually warped and ruined the flooring down in the Community Hall, that big room they've got over on the far side. So we had to replace that one. I remember that cost, even though it was, it was engineered wood flooring, it was three, still three, four thousand dollars just to replace it, plus the other stuff. So you get into that every once in a while, you know? You go to Helena and now Helena's the newer building, so things are in a little bit better shape. Helena, the biggest thing that takes the hit on Helena is the drywall and the flooring and, and some of the plumbing. A lot of our calls are on plumbing there and I don't know if we get good gravity coming out, going to the city sewer or anything like that, but a lot of stoppages, so the guys are coming in, you know, and if you're in the place and you get a call for, hey, my toilets are stopped up, we try to get out of there as quick as we can and get it fixed and everything. Hadn't done Helena now in a while, so I tell you, haven't even been over there lately to look at it, but I remember our last repair, we had to repaint the walls. We, we took care of all the ceiling tiles that were damaged and everything, but the painting and the staining of the, the wainscoting and everything and going on in through the back part, that was about seven thousand dollars worth of cost. And, and it had only been a year before that or maybe a year and a half before that, we had to repaint it again. That was about five thousand dollars. So that, that, that room, that area takes a pretty good beating too. The floors is the old, well, it's not old, it's new, but it's vinyl, it's vinyl flooring, it's VCT. Had we known maybe that it was going to get as much use when it was designed, we might have put some other kind of flooring in there. But being VCT, it scratches up and scars pretty bad. In fact, that floor will, I think Mr. Scourge been over there late, was when he came aboard, went over there and looked and, and made a comment about, or it might have been Mr. Reader, I forget, one of, about how it looked kind of ugly. And the fact is, I think we had just spent, I think that was right after we, or several months after we'd spent the seven thousand dollars on the painting or something like that. But anyway, it's always, on, on that building, it's always a little bit of cost you're going to incur with the maintenance and everything. So.
Well, questions, Mr. Hilt?
Yeah, you know, some of the things you mentioned, like the failure of some plumbing or electrical, that's not really rent dependent. I mean, that's the condition of the structure.
No, that's just a, that's a wear and tear issue.
And whether or not we charge somebody a hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, I mean, that, that wouldn't matter. So obviously, it sounds like we need to do some capital improvements on the building because that's a, that's a critical historical building that's a downtown icon. And so we need to maintain that building. We need to put some money into capital budget if necessary to work on plumbing and electrical. I'm trying to see, like, the preparation and cleanup. I mean, we're not, so it's not, we're not bringing in contractors to do it. There's not an additional cost above and beyond our, our county employees that are already on the payroll. I guess I'm trying to process this.
I used the two custo, for the most part, I used the two custodians that we have now. And like I said, if they're renting, if we're renting on the weekend and everything, we'll take a, we'll take away from some of the other stuff we're doing on Friday. Or like I said, if we're setting it up for the rotor or something like that on Friday and go in there and get it set up. Get the bathroom stocked with paper towels, toilet paper and hand cleaner and that sort of stuff. And so, yeah, we're using our own, our own in-house staff for that and that's what we have been doing. Ice machine in both of them is, you know, a maintenance issue a lot. For whatever reason, you know, hey, quit making ice or it's out of ice and that sort of thing. So that's a, that's where I bring in the maintenance guys and they'll work on that.
Well, I, the reason I had asked to get this information, because I know Donna, Donna, you're still a member of Rotary, right? Rotary has done a tremendous amount of good for our whole community and a hundred dollars a meeting, I don't know how that's going to work in Rotary's budget, but that just seems, for an organization that does so much, I think the county, if we've got a facility, I don't think we ought to charge that much for its use. Donna, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I think it is a little steep for Rotary. I mean, I would hope that we could give them a break.
And, and.
We do a lot of good.
And I, and I kind of like, feel that way about any 501(c)(3). Now Todd, I know you were saying that you can get a 501(c)(3).
Yes, sir. They hand them out.
But I would say, any known reputable group that does not do anything for profit, that helps the community, I would like to see us give them some kind of a price break on use of these facilities.
You and Irons.
In agreement in principle, in that it's just a way to do it legitimately. And I believe we asked at our last meeting, staff to look at some language that Mike could protect us.
You did, Mr. Chairman. And when you mentioned 501(c)(3), my suggestion to you would be that you make it a recognized by the Internal Revenue Service organization. Now, I wanted to tell you, 501(c)(3) is not what you mentioned at the last meeting. Anybody can be a charitable organization through the Secretary of State.
Mm-hmm.
But if you go through the process to be a 501(c)(3) or a 5, there's about twenty different versions of (c)(3).
Yes.
If you go through that process, you have to go through quite a bit to get organized and recognized and you have a yearly requirement to keep up with that. And it's not, it's not easy. So my suggestion was going to be if you want to do something, if you say it has to be an Internal Revenue Service recognized charitable organization or exempt organization should probably be better. I'll give you an example. Our county attorneys have an affiliate and we are not a 501(c)(3) because 501(c)(3)'s cannot do any lobbying of any type at all. And sometimes our councils as county attorneys will ask us to speak to a legislative member. So we're a 501(a)(6). So I would suggest you just, if you're going to do it, you, you do the larger, you say any recognized, tax-exempt organization by the Internal Revenue Service. Now, you need to understand that if you do that, I, I'm assuming the Rotary is, I don't know. But we have encountered other times, people who think they are and they're not, there was actually an organization that had been, but they'd not done their updates and so they lost their exemption. So it's, it's not simple to be an Internal Revenue Service recognized, tax-exempt organization. And it requires annual filing with the IRS. So I just let you know that that's.
I'm fine with it. Well, I think that's good.
Yes, I do too.
And I think we ought to give those organizations a rental break.
Good price break. Then, any other, we hadn't called it for a motion, we're just kind of talking out loud, but any other comments on that?
Yeah, I agree with that as well. If you can go through and get the proper papers through the federal government, then you should receive a break.
Then would it be the wishes of council that we instruct staff to change that amendment, to add that language to it and bring it back to us at our next meeting?
I would, I would like that.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I guess it would also help for Crystal, who sort of handles that, to have an idea of what you want to reduce. A hundred's not a good number for those organizations, so if you would tell us what the good number is and it.
What was it to begin?
I was going to say, can we just leave it what it is for them and go up on everybody else?
I mean, as long as we have a number, we just need to know what to put in the.
Yeah, I think it, keep it what it's historically been.
Yeah.
For those organizations and for anything outside those organizations, we raise it to the proposed new rate.
Or any organization that meets the requirement.
Yes.
And last question from staff's perspective. Do you want that by next week's meeting or is that something that, I guess we need it by next week because you've got these two entities, I think, that are coming in.
J.C.'s.
Yeah, yeah. So.
We'll have it prepared by next week, a version for you to consider.
Okay. Fantastic. Okay. Anything else on that item? Hearing none. The next is the council to consider the American Recovery Funds premium pay for employees. Just wanted to speak to everyone. We have a number of county employees, a number of volunteers here. We certainly appreciate you being here. We are continuing to move forward on a plan that will try to accommodate as many people as possible. It is our desire as a council. I, I speak for me personally, but I believe corporately and I will open that up for everybody after I'm done to say that we want to make sure that you all receive the benefit of this. It's our desire to meet, to the needs of as many people as possible. We were in hopes maybe to be able to do that now, but there was a hitch that came up that legal is trying to work out for us, that possibly maybe take a legislation change, I understand. So until we can get more clarification on that, we just aren't in a position to be able to move forward right now. So we appreciate you being here. I hope you aren't here just for that, but if you are, we, we still welcome you and we'd like for you to be here anytime. So I will just go down on the end. I know this is kind of a hot topic, so Ms. Shealy, I'll start and I'll just let everybody have, be able to say anything they want to on this since it is a, an issue.
I concur totally with you. I would like to help as many people as we can, but we've got to go by what the law says, what money was intended for, so.
Mr. Hilt?
And the ARP allows for us to reimburse some of our employees and that is our number one priority, as I understand that the first thing that we're going to spend funds on will be our employees and then we'll disperse other funds, so.
Absolutely.
That is our priority and I agree with you, Todd.
Yes, sir.
That too is, is what I've said our priority is, is our employees and we'll take care of you first and then we'll figure out what we're going to do with the other funds.
Mr. Airwood?
And I agree with that totally. And basically, we want to do what is, is correct and not, not have to go back later on and try to explain why we did the wrong thing. So it's best to find out exactly what we can do with those funds and we will definitely do what we can do with those funds.
Mr. Scourge, Reverend Scourge?
We all, we all concur together, like you said earlier, there's so much information out there now, we want to go by doing it the right way. And we all are studying the issue, but when we go far, we want to go far in the right direction.
We have the best county employees in the nation as far as I'm concerned and we're thankful for you. And our, our goal, our goal is to, to take care of you and show you how much you're appreciated across all our branches of, of service that we have throughout the county. I didn't mean to go in front of you, Mr. Tony, if, if there's anything you want to add to that, you or Jay want to add to that?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, other than to say administration agrees with you, we are working and have been working on numbers and running scenarios of what it would cost. So I think we've got some pretty good information for you. That there is the final question of getting the final regulation right now, and this may be what you were referring to, Mr. Chairman, but the regulations that are out now are interim regulations, so we don't have the final rule, which we do expect after the first of the year. But to be prepared to move quickly when that is released, we're running numbers now and again, running scenarios to present to you so that when you're ready to make the decision, we'll be ready with the information.
And the last thing I'll say, and then I'll let anybody else close it, if they choose, is that our goal also is not to piecemeal it, to do a little bit now and a little bit there, to handle everybody in one batch so that it's consistent, everybody sees upfront what is done and everybody's done at the same time. So anybody want to add anything else to that? Alright, hearing none. Item number six, update on the capital project sales tax. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real brief, as you know and have even been involved in to an extent, a lot of activities are going on now as things are ramping up with the capital project sales tax. Earlier this week, the, the commission that you appointed several members to had an organizational meeting, I believe that was Monday. Also on Monday, the, the staff, Karen Bremer made an excellent presentation to the Newberry County Government Association. I think some of you were in attendance at that and heard that, that presentation. Yesterday. Yesterday, the 30th of November was the last day for outside agencies to make requests for council sponsorship of their projects, and so we got another, don't have the exact number, but eight to 10 additional requests that came in yesterday that, that we are trying to compile and, and review before we present that to you. So again, a lot of activities are happening all at one time right now, and, and we're trying to stay on top of that, and we'll keep the council apprised of that as things happen, at least at the council meetings. And if we, if something comes up that, that you need to be aware of between council meetings, we'll certainly notify you by email or otherwise.
And yesterday was the deadline, is that correct?
Yesterday was the deadline. So all projects, or all project requests should be in, at least in our hands right now. We haven't completed the review, but they're in our hands.
Any questions from anybody on council?
Just the, since we've, our next meeting's next week, can you, Karen, whomever, email us those additional requests so that we would have those to kind of look at for the next
We'll get you a composite list of what is for the county, as well as just inform you what the other municipalities have submitted, so you'll know what's on there. One other thing that needs to be mentioned to you, Mr. Sid Prompton resigned as a commissioner because he had conflicts in 2022, but he would not be able to attend. So Mr. Mike Reed has stepped up into his position. So we have a full commission with one alternate right now.
Anything else on capital sales tax? Hearing none. Item number seven, appointments. Anyone have any appointments?
I have one. I'd like to appoint Aubrey Horn II to the Board of Rural Fire Control. Aubrey Horn I stepped down, and he wants to take his spot.
Okay. Have a motion for appoint Aubrey Horn II to the Board of Rural Fire Control. Was there a second? Is there a discussion by anyone? Sorry, second by Mr. Hitt. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, by show of hands. It is unanimous. Any other appointments? Hearing none. Did I skip? I did. No. Public comments. Sheriff Lee Foster?
We would certainly appreciate if y'all do anything with the ARPA funds, the consideration for employees. We're in a very fluid employment situation. We are competing for employees, not only to hire employees, but we're also competing to retain employees. Law enforcement in particular is increasingly getting difficult to keep employees and find qualified employees to come in. With that said, those people that we recruit against, and unfortunately, that's what it is, those people that we recruit against, most if not many of them have already issued the ARPA funds to the employees. And we certainly want to do the right thing, but we want to be able to maintain our employees and keep them in a state just as good, if not better, than our neighbors and those within the county. So we certainly hope that if it comes to pass, that, that you will give it strong consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff. We certainly appreciate that, and I don't think anybody can ever take for granted having the finest law enforcement, safest county in the state, and all the accolades that come along with the sheriff's office. So we're appreciative to y'all.
Speaking of emergency services.
Yes, sir. Comments from the county administrator?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, just one more announcement that actually should be on the agenda, but for some reason it's not. But under your future meetings, there is actually, at this point, an economic development committee meeting scheduled for Monday, which is December the 6th at 6:00 p.m. And again, that's not listed, so I wanted to mention that to you, for those, for those of you who are on the, the committee, so you'd be aware.
So there is an economic on the 6th?
I'm sorry?
Economic development on the 6th?
On Monday, the 6th at 6:00. Yes, sir.
Comments from council members? We're going to do something different. We're going to go down to Reverend Scourge first.
We are, we certainly are monitoring the money coming in, and I want to see every department looked into. We need to go around the whole entire county, and probably work through the sheriff's office and give all of them a piece of the pie as possible. We're looking in that direction. I can't tell you when it's going to be, but it's going to be fairly done. Thank you.
I totally agree with that, and I know very well that we have the best quality service in the county, city, and everywhere else in Newberry County. So we would definitely like to keep everybody here. It's nothing like, as you say, veterans running each department, so we need to keep everybody here as long as they possibly want to stay. I also like to wish everyone happy holiday, happy and safe holidays. I know we have parades coming up this weekend. I hope to see everyone downtown. And I am looking forward to all of the festivities that's going on in the month of December. So God bless all of you.
Yes. Mr. Hitt? I'm sorry, Mr. Shealy? I was looking at him and thinking you. That didn't work out well for me.
I echo everybody's sentiments. We certainly want to look out for our county employees. I know some other counties have beat us to the punch per se, but we don't want to end up having to get penalized for jumping the gun and doing something we weren't supposed to do after receiving some more information. We will get it out as quickly as we can because we know we have the finest employees around, all the way around. With that being said, we, we, we're working on it. Don't, don't think we're not working on it, thinking about you. Hope everybody has a happy and safe holiday as well. Stay safe, stay healthy, and keep praying for our county.
That's right. I just, several elected officials here and department heads, thank y'all for being here. We appreciate you more than you know and what you do to make this county so special. And we certainly have you all in our hearts and minds as well. Item 11A was in addition from, to the agenda for consideration of changing the next council meeting from December the 15th to December the 8th. I know that a couple of our council members have commitments that night. I believe Mr. Shealy's going to be out of town, and I will be having my back surgery that morning, and will be hospitalized for at least two to three days. So I, I think you would have a very difficult time having a quorum if we don't choose to move it. So would there be a motion to move that meeting to December the 8th? Reverend Scourge has a motion. Is there a second? Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, by show of hands. Opposed likewise. So we will move that meeting. Tony, if you could make sure that all the proper announcements get made by staff, that that meeting is moved to December the 8th at 6:00 p.m. Other future meetings will be county council, I'm sorry, next one will be the, December the 6th is the economic development at 6 o'clock, that Tony just reminded us of. And then, if you can even wrap your head around that, after one more meeting, the next meetings will be January 5th, 2022, and January 19th, 2022. We have flown through a year.
Absolutely.
Anything else from anyone? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Reader, all in favor, by show of hands. Opposed likewise. We stand adjourned.